Ladies and gentlemen, you've already risen, so would you join me in the pledge of allegiance? The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting is called to order at 7:04. Mr. Secretary, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may, Mr. President. Mrs. Issing.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Koschka.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell.
Here.
Mr. Nemec.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
We have the floor, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Welcome. I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 13, 2013, meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Turn over to information at this time with Dr. Butler.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's, we have a lot under my information. Let's start with Mr. Engleisen's hometown IQ recognition.
Mrs. Wilkic, where are you at? There you are. Stand up, everybody. We have Mrs. Wilkic with our hometown IQ team. This is, these guys are part of our quiz team. They, they were in competition on Channel 2 for the home, flip it around there, Paul. There you go. So as you can see, we, we won $2,500. We were the runner-up finalists in the hometown IQ competition. Who did we go up in the finals? Who was that?
Winchester Thurston.
Winchester Thurston.
Baldwin.
Baldwin. But we, they were on television this Saturday, so I got to see everybody. They did a great job, and you guys kicked some butt. Won by like 400 points or something like that, so they did a great job. These kids have been practicing all year. Mrs. Wilkic has done a great job with them, and so Westfield Insurance sponsors it, and they gave us $2,500 to go to the program, and I think there's some stipulations on how we're going to use it, but the kids and I had some different ideas, so we're still finalizing that. They wanted to donate that money somewhere back into the school so that the kids could benefit from it in some way, shape, or form. We talked about it, possibly a television in the cafeteria so that we can broadcast some announcements, some of the things that we've done over the television. So just some ideas, but these kids did a great job, so we just want to recognize them for everything they've done. Nice job, guys. Thank you.
I just want to tell everybody to tune in on Saturday for the finals at 11 o'clock, so that'll be the final episode for hometown. And they also have like a evening hotspot on Channel 2 as well at 7:30, I believe, on Saturday, too.
I have a question for you, if you don't mind. I enjoy watching the show, and congratulations to all of you. Just so I know a little bit more about how it works, do they give you a set of questions to study, or is this just, you just, it's up to you to study on what you want to study?
It's, you know, it's kind of a free-for-all. We don't get any question sets or anything.
So they don't give you any general idea what could be discussed? It's all just general knowledge?
Yeah.
Well, I'm impressed. It's impressive. Thank you.
It could be science, language arts, it could be anything, all of it.
Yeah.
Math, anything.
Yeah, we actually, we meet once a week starting at the beginning of the school year. This is Grant, Grant Smith, Paul Stock, Laurel Hilliker, and Tim Hanna, and they're probably my most dedicated members, and that's why they end up being chosen for the hometown IQ team. They're extremely dedicated, and their perseverance pays off, and it's neck and neck literally every week to find those starting spots and to see who gets that spot on TV to be our little celebrities. So we use different databases of questions. We have some online resources that we use. We play Trivial Pursuit. I mean, we dip into all of our resources that we can find, and it pays off. They do well.
Well, we're proud to have you represent the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much. Wonderful job. Thank you. At the request of Mr. Simpson and Mrs. Gardner, we, we want to recognize our American Legion Award winners this year, two, I believe, two from each middle school. So, Mr. Simpson, do you want to go?
I believe I'll turn it over to Mrs. Gardner.
Mrs. Gardner is going to do the whole thing. Very good.
Well, not the whole thing. A little help here. I would like my students to please come on up front. Dylan Cleveland, the son of Michael and Kelly Cleveland. Emily Cappazuto is the daughter of Ron and Carrie Cappazuto. With us today, too, is Commander Moffisanti from Trafford's Post 331. He, we actually had an award ceremony. You can go into the center over here as soon as we find our kids, they get their way out. We had an award ceremony at school where they were presented with their awards, but Mrs. Gardner, in all of her whatever, forgot to let them read their acceptance speeches, so they had to write them they were approved. But the American Legion Award, and bring your students up, too. You can tell me their names.
Okay. Austin Musalem and Jessica Deutsch.
And youth are often acknowledged for their, and awarded for their scholastic achievements, but the American Legion believes that they should also be praised when they demonstrate strong qualities of character and good citizenship. And since 1926, the Legion has recognized such students with its school award medal program. We gave these awards to a young man and young woman from our eighth grade class. They exemplify the six qualities that define character, courage, honor, leadership, patriotism, scholarship, and service. The students were nominated by their staff, and then they voted on it, and we worked together as a, you know, a team to come up with these. I'm very, very proud to present these students to you, and this is a wonderful thing to put on their college resume. Even a nomination is a very important thing, so congratulations. Dylan, go ahead. You want to read your acceptance speech a month late? I'm sorry.
All right. I am Dylan Cleveland, and I am extremely happy to have won the American Legion Award. The American Legion Award has been a huge accomplishment for many other students in the past. Over the past three years, I have learned how much of an honor it is to win the American Legion Award. Winning the American Legion Award makes me feel extremely proud. I truly understand and appreciate the award, and I am thankful for the chance that the American Legion provides. My experiences at Trafford Middle School has made me a better person all around. Being a part of the student council and morning announcement team have been two of my middle school highlights. I want to thank all of the teachers and staff from Trafford Middle School who have helped me become the person I am today. I feel that my teachers have prepared me to move on to the high school, and I appreciate all that they have done. In addition, I want to thank two of the most important people in my life, my mom and dad. I have, I am thankful for their guidance, support, and positive encouragement throughout the years. I also want to thank my peers. I have made many new friends since coming to Trafford. I look forward to these friendships continuing throughout high school. My final thank you is for Mrs. Gardner. You have treated me great the past three years. I have thoroughly enjoyed my days here at Trafford Middle School. Thank you.
And it's with great honor and humility that I accept this award. First and foremost, I would like to thank my family. Thank you for always being there for me and guiding me on the path to being a better person. I would especially like to thank my father, an American Legion member, for instilling in me a love of my country and a sense of pride in serving this great nation. Secondly, I want to thank all of my teachers and my principal, Mrs. Gardner. I'm so grateful for people like you in my life that see such pleasant qualities in me. Lastly, I want to thank the American Legion for this award. I hope that my courage, honor, leadership, patriotism, scholarship, and service will continue to inspire those to be truly generous people.
Twenty-two middle schools. We both give out the American Legion Award, but we do it a little bit differently. We do not have an awards assembly like Trafford does, so they have not received their medal yet.
Thank you. Thank you. There, I had them, I knew that the Trafford students were doing the acceptance speeches, so they didn't have to do anything like that, but I thought it would be nice for them to put together a few words about their time at Penn Middle School. So, Jessica?
First, I would like to thank the school board and especially Mr. Simpson for this American Legion Award. Through the guidance of Mr. Simpson, the teaching staff, and classmates, the past three, three years at Penn Middle School have not only expanded my education, but have allowed me to grow as a person. Through the years in the classroom, I have learned to respect my teachers because they were the ones who helped me when I had no idea what we were learning. They were the ones who put up with my ridiculous questions and answers, and most of all, they were the ones who made class fun and interesting so that I look forward to it every day. Although the teachers put a big part in this chapter of my life, my fellow students were just as important, for they were the ones who helped me when I was too nervous to answer questions or too embarrassed to ask them. In addition to the students and teachers of Penn Middle School helping me shape me into who I am today, they were, they were not the only contributors. Being in after-school programs such as basketball, track, and volleyball also helped me shape who, shaped me into who I am today. I learned from my coaches and teammates to never give up and to keep pushing forward until you reach your goal. They taught me that even when you're having a bad game or even a bad day, if you look at the brighter side of everything, things will get better, and you will turn into a brighter, happier you. I believe that these are some of the reasons I was chosen for this award, and that is an honor and a privilege to accept it. Thank you.
I'd like to start off by saying that I will never forget the three years I spent at Penn Middle School. I've made so many wonderful memories there with my teachers and my peers. Receiving this award has been the cherry on top. I would like to say thank you to my teachers for nominating me for this award. It is a real honor. I look forward to high school so that I can continue to excel and represent my school district, but when I look back, I will never forget my middle school memories. Without my teachers, I would not be where I am today. They were there when I was stuck on a question or when I was struggling in class. They are the reason I am here. For that, I would like to say thank you to my teachers, not only for nominating me, but helping me, but helping to make me the person I am. I also really appreciate the fact that I was able to help my teachers with chores around the school. This gave me a chance to repay them for what they do for me and a chance for me to mature. Thank you very much, Mr. Simpson and the school board, for this American Legion Award.
If you could stay right there. Dr. Trey has some certificates for you from the school board. As a school board, we're exceptionally proud of you again. We've got to see you in a lot of different ways, and Dylan, congratulations.
Thank you.
Tremendous job. Emily?
Thank you.
Also. Jessica? Also. And Austin.
Thank you very much.
I can tell you, it's quite an award. Fifty years ago, I also received the same award myself, and it's something you treasure to this day, and look what you've done. Look forward to it, Dylan. Isn't that exciting? Yeah, Dylan said, yeah, I know this guy. Well done, really well done. No, I'm sorry. Thank you. Congratulations. Great opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Done with it? I think we're done.
It's interesting how the American Legion, recognizing the American Legion Award winners. Mrs. Gardner called me up one day, and she goes, "I don't mean to be bossy, but we are, we are going to recognize American Legion Award winners." I said, "That sounds like a wonderful idea." Okay, our next student of the month, Mr. Morasty.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. I'd like to introduce the elementary student of the month from McCullough Elementary School, Ruby Chen. Ruby, if you'd come up? And Ruby was like, oh, this, you told me it was going to be a smaller deal. A lot of people, a lot up front, Ruby. She was like, "Do I have to speak?" No. Ruby is the son of Ricky and Karen Chen, and Ruby has a brother, Ben. When talking with Ruby's parents, they expressed that Ruby is a very caring and an individual that works very hard at everything that she does. Mom and dad also expressed that Ruby tries to do everything to the best of her ability. She was also talked about by her parents that she loves to read every day. It's very unusual that you don't see a book in her hand, and she also enjoys drawing in her free time. Quite often, parents said that she can be found in the restaurant that they have, although it's a little more difficult now because she's expecting compensation. So as you age, that's a good thing. When talking with Ruby, she stated her favorite part of school day is math class, Mr. Simpson, because there is nothing ever boring about math. Ruby also let me know that she spends about six weeks every summer with her grandparents in New York. She spends the weekdays in Flushing and the weekends in Brooklyn, and during that time that she's there, she goes to Chinese school. Ruby speaks three languages. She speaks English, Mandarin, and what I found out was the mother tongue. When, when Ruby explained it to me, she said, "I don't know how to spell that." So the parents were kind enough to explain that. And she also understands some Cantonese, correct? Other interests Ruby has include playing tennis, piano, and she's excellent at the violin. She kept that from me for five years, that she was playing the violin, and we actually had her come into class and she played the violin. She's going to be something else to see and hear in the future regarding that. When speaking with her brother, Ben, he let me know that they fight a lot and that she is very helpful, though, with his homework, and he likes that. Ruby's teachers identified her as a student that excels across the curriculum. She was just recently accepted in the Spectrum program. She is a very respectful, cooperative, sweet, and caring individual who shows this to all that come into contact with her. Along with her academic excellence, she is an exceptional piano player and takes lessons for the violin. Ruby is also very artistic. She is looked upon by our peers as an individual that is willing to help with anything that needs to be done. Her work ethic, they said, is without equal. Mr. Simpson, you're going to be receiving here an excellent student when she, and then Mr. Engleisen, when she gets to high school, it is certain that she'll leave a lasting impression. Ruby, congratulations on being selected the elementary student of the month.
We're all very, board, we're very proud of what you do and your friendship and your knowledge and your, your intensity and the things you try to do well in life. I think you did a great job. Congratulations. Okay, our next student of the month, Mr. Engleisen.
I wasn't sure if my student was here. I was looking in the audience, I couldn't find him, then I realized he's, he's behind the camera. Eddie graduated two weeks, three weeks ago, and he doesn't outstanding job.
I know where to stand.
Eddie graduated a couple weeks ago.
You don't have to listen anymore.
Turn around, please, Eddie.
Then he can't see.
Thank you. That's perfect.
Mr. Ben, Mr. Ben's been his mentor for four years now, so. But anyway, seriously, I was looking for, I wasn't sure if he was here, if he's behind the camera. He can't get away from it. He just, he loves the video program. He's going to Robert Morris. He's majoring in that program. He's been our video president now this past year. We hold a festival every spring where all of our videos are showcased, and talent, there's awards given out. He hosted that festival. He chaired the festival, organized it, got it all together. And this year, our video program competed at Robert Morris at a competition that they had. It's only our second year that we went, and if you recall, the board meeting or two ago, can't remember, but we, we did a great job there. We won five out of eight categories, and a lot of that is because of Eddie's leadership and what he's been able to do for the program. And he won personally best overall show out of 200 videos, and there were 30 schools, so he kind of took home the winnings there. So he did a great job with that. He also won a best category for his cyberbullying video. He won an award for excellence, excellence, and then animation. He and three other classmates won another award of excellence for their opening sequence category, and he did such a great job down there. They asked him to stick around and to help volunteer and serve as a student director at the program, so he, he really does a great job. But outside of the regular classwork that he's involved with, you know, he's been filming for three years for the program. He's done football games, musicals, plays, chorus concerts, band concerts, middle school events. He went to Deer Valley this year and did the DVD for Deer Valley. He went to Disney with the band and did the DVD for the Disney trip. Very talented behind the camera. He excels in all different aspects of the video program, directing, editing, and acting. Very comfortable on live TV. Does our morning broadcasts every day. He's just a natural. Things just flow, and he's very, he's a natural. I mean, go onto YouTube and check it out. PT Video, and you'll see him on there. He's the man. But he was very reliable. Mr. Vinton, he speaks very highly of him. He's able, he's able to come on daily to get the video program up and running and just help other kids, other teachers with their different programs. The video department teachers are always asking Mr. Vinton to help them out, and Eddie's the man he goes to, and Eddie, Eddie does it for him. So as I said, he's going to go to Robert, Robert Morris for video production, and they're thrilled to have him. They've already said he does great things, and we can't wait to get him started. So good luck, Eddie. Nice job.
And on behalf of the board, you've been really a great team leader. Your program has grown so professionally, and you made us all look good, and it's just really very, very hard to do. We do appreciate that, and we should learn best in life. And thanks for coming back to do this. And, and you look good. You really did. Congratulations. If we could just, thank you. If we could get the students of the month, as well as the American Legion winners, over here by the flag, so we can get some pictures for the press, that would be outstanding. And a short break, so the board can congratulate them, yes. So, students of the month and Legion winners over here by the flag, please. I think the Legion folks left.
Not with them. It's somewhere here.
We appreciate that. Yeah. Yeah. But that's, that's what you do. I can't. All right. We did the, we did the. 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 Parents, if you need to leave, we understand. If you wish to stay, you can stay as well, but we understand you might have other things to do. But congratulations and thank you for coming. Okay, my next information item is Mike Gleason. He is our insurance consultant and he is going to talk to you a little bit about some different things that we can do with health insurance. This was a result of the budget summit that we had last fall and one of the ideas that came from the budget summit was to look at different health insurance options and Mike is the expert and he will go over what we have learned so far. So, Mike, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, you can talk to the board.
Thank you. Boards have a very difficult time these days making planning education in this environment without any additional funds. Expenses rise and so we were asked to take a look at the medical costs and we have a lot of experience in dealing with medical consulting, employee benefit consulting. Chrissy McFadden is also here with our company and Colleen Hayes is here. She's with Health America Aetna. So, what we were charged to do by the board is to go out to the insurance marketplace and find out, get people to compete for Penn Travers business. So, two things. Do an RFP to foster competition for the school districts business and number two, come up with any ideas, creative ideas, we may have to cut costs. So, what you have in the packet on the right is a spreadsheet that is a result of that RFP process and I'm gonna ask Chrissy to say a few words about, you know, how we did the RFP process, who we went to, so you have a little background of how we ended up with the Health America Aetna option.
We did look at two different markets, Health America and UPMC. What we're showing you here on the spreadsheet is the most competitive in terms of price and also the one with the better plan and network match. So, as you can see, on the top half of your spreadsheet, it is your current plans, your enrollment in those plans, and the annual cost of those plans. Underneath that is the Health America Aetna option with the total cost for that option. Again, it was a network match, 99.5 percent network match. The point five percent are things that were maybe not identifiable, like Aspen. It's probably not a network charge. It probably would be covered.
When you say network match, that means the doctors, if you have a doctor now, you will have that same doctor if the district goes forward and changes the health insurance and it's a 99.5 percent match. And a lot of that point five are people that are out of the region, maybe they're in Colorado or Florida that are still under our plan. So, 99.5 percent is a very strong, strong, strong number.
And the coverages are the same, so substantially exact. So, it's very comparable from the current plan you have. So, what this shows you, the bottom line figure, we'll work up from there, is that with a couple assumptions, and we're gonna talk about that, the savings of what you have now would be $547,000. Now, to get to that number, what this is, is this is called a deductible program. So, there's a 2,000 single and 4,000 family. Now, throwing that onto the employees would not be something acceptable, so what this assumes is that the school, the school will fund the deductible. So, the out-of-pocket cost for the employees will not change. So, it's really, it's just a different way to structure it. It's being a little creative. The reason why we went with the 2,000, 4,000 is we've implemented many of these with other clients with similar savings. Now, where a lot of the savings comes from is that with funding the deductible, a lot of the employees don't use the health plan at all. So, what you're doing is you're capturing that savings instead of the insurance company. So, that's where a substantial part of that is. So, what we do is we predict what percent of the deductible will be used and the actuarial assumptions we've heard from the insurance companies is around 50 percent is a pretty good number to count on that is gonna be used. So, what we do is we're a little more conservative. We take it up to a 65 percent. So, we're assuming that 65 percent of the deductible is gonna be used up and that's how we come up with the 547. If, if, just thinking through this process, if you think, well, Mike, what if every single person used their deductible? If every single person used their deductible, you would still save $70,000. And we know that that is not going to happen because it's statistically impossible. So, even if every single person maxed out on the deductible, you'd still save $70,000. Does anybody have any questions?
Is that a per year? I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's a per year savings. And what I, what, we've discussed this at that meeting in October and I'm throwing this at you today. This is the beginning of a conversation of what, of maybe changing are the way we do insurance, okay? This is the start. We've done quite a bit of research already. We're at this point with Health America Aetna. I really want you to think about it. We have some questions for Mike. We can do a Q and A right now. There's no decision tonight, okay? We, this is something that is gonna be a process. If the board wants to go through with this and we have to, there's a lot of education that has to go on, there's agreements that have to work with unions, but this is the start of the conversation. So, that's what, I don't want you thinking that, you know, we're not asking for decisions tonight. We just wanted to put out in front of you the amount of money that could be saved if we start moving forward. So, questions?
The funding of the deductible, how does, what mechanism makes that happen? Is it accounts individually? Is it just a lump sum?
It's not individual accounts. It would, this is, this is a health reimbursement account.
Okay.
So, it's any amount of savings that a person doesn't hit their deductible, the district keeps. That's where this is coming from.
Okay.
That's where the savings comes from, but...
So, the use is recaptured?
It's recaptured. The difference is now you have one card where you just throw that down when you go out. There would be another card that is where the deductible funding would come from and that's an account that would be set up. The district would fund on a monthly basis or it's possibly a wire transfer, maybe in two weeks, and that's how that's funded. There's a company that just handles all those claims that come in and that charge is in here.
And from the employee perspective, they would get a debit card that they could use at the pharmacy or at the doctor's office to pay for the services that they would be responsible for.
And that's all funded out of the deductible capturing program that you're describing?
That's right.
In other words, what we would possibly be considering doing here would be having one similar line item we have for funding our benefits, but it would be divvied out in a different fashion and at the end of the program, at the end of a year of the program, did I understand you correctly to say 547707 is the savings if we use 75 percent already?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five. So...
So, yeah, it's a sliding scale. I mean, whatever the dollar is, the dollar is. It's not this or that.
And you've based that on some pretty broad-based data that's experience-based data for them that you've used for that.
And for the fudge factor, 15 percent.
Yes, and then...
That's right. That's right. Because when we went to the carriers and said, what is the typical usage, the number we got was 50. We have other groups that we've seen run a little higher than that, so we were, you know, a little more conservative in that. So, it could be better and it, you know, could be worse than the 65. Could be somewhere...
But our worst case, if every single one of our members would use every bit of deductible and go vote off, we'd still be realizing a 70-plus or minus savings in the current expenditures for our current plan. This is apple to apples, oranges to oranges. Deductible's the same, co-pay's the same, losing nothing in service content.
The employee's deductible is the same because they have the debit card for that first 2,000, but then after that, yes, the co-pays are the same.
Yeah, after that, it goes back to the normal, what they have now.
But what they're feeling coming out of their wallet on the ongoing using of the program basis stays the same.
Correct.
Will not change.
And from a management of the deductible plan, who's your, who's the company that manages that?
It's North Coast Administrators.
And just, because I'm living that dream right now and I submit stuff, I use my debit card and they always want clarification. Does that continue to happen into this plan as well?
What we can do is we can set up certain things to go through automatically.
Okay.
But sometimes you may need to submit substantiation. Now, we have a very good relationship with North Coast Administrators. It is at your discretion as the employer. It is your money. If you wish to turn that off, they can do that for you.
First of all, I was the one who asked this, so I'm excited to see you all talk about it. We have comparable, we have an HSA, same idea, the high deductible. We've had it for five years. I am very happy with it, addressing Scott's issue, question. I have, using my debit card, we've had it for five years, I was saying, I've never had one question asked. We just submit it and it goes.
Like it's paid, but a lot of times it'll last for secondary...
I've never had that happen with our, whoever our administrator is.
North Coast Administrator.
Yeah, we've never had that happen. I am a, I work, I consult a couple days a week in the healthcare management business and I am a very big fan of these. I think it saves both the company's money and it saves the employees' money.
Because they can see, when they go to the pharmacy, even though they have the debit card that has that amount on it that the school is providing, they can see that that prescription costs $300 or $200 or $20.
It's the beginning of consumerism where they can really see what they're spending.
Exactly. And they can say, you know what, I don't want that one for $300. Is there anything else cheaper that I can have?
No, I've been there. I've been there. I think it's a great plan.
Have there been any school districts that have done this, which you're presenting to us, that have switched?
Has Dallas kind of...
It's common in industry.
Because we belong to that Westmore County Consortium.
This is, the school districts are very, in the past, when, in regards to being created like this, private industry is way ahead of the game. It's coming. Everyone's willing to be doing it soon. It works in private industry. We have lots of clients where it works and is working and it's really a way to begin bending the curve of healthcare costs, beginning to even out.
And if you look at these savings, the difference here at the 65 percent and the 147, that's almost $2,000.
You know, we belong to that Westmore County Consortium. I used to make this presentation for them also. That'd be a big...
Well, one of the discussions that I've learned a lot in the last six months about insurance, I had the same question to Mike and the consortiums are notoriously closed and they do not want, for various reasons, they do not want that competition, they do not want to have these kind of different plans or options available. Brett has banged his head a few times at these consortium meetings just to talk about, let's just talk about HRAs or HSAs and there's just not a lot of movement that way. So, we went ahead with Mike's help and said, listen, let's see what it can do for us. Now, for us to leave the consortium, you have to notify them. We have notified them January 1 that we may be leaving in the year. We don't have to leave, but you have to give them a little letter saying we may leave. Now, we think that that letter got them moving a little bit. Would you agree?
Yes. They are now willing to offer a high deductible plan, but it's priced very similarly to what we're paying currently, so there are real no savings they're offering.
There'll be a law.
And the other, the other consideration, and maybe this won't come to fruition, but, you know, they're strictly a high mark plan and if the high mark UPMC situation is not resolved, half of, more than half of the providers are gonna be out of the consortium network. So, that's one of the great advantages that Health America offers is that they have access to both systems and if they don't resolve that dispute, again, our people are only gonna be affected by maybe a half a percent.
And that's, that was one of, that's one of the things that we felt that was very important, that our employees, however this UPMC high mark split occurs, they're safeguarded because of Health America.
The other thing to your point is that the consortium buys for the group. So, in the group, some are good, some are bad in cost, some are in the middle. So, you're getting what is good for the group. There's a lot of districts that their experience is very poor and it is year after year, whether it's demographics or area, it's hard to say, but I've looked at a lot of different groups. Your district is a better group. It's better than what your consortium is giving you and that's borne out by the numbers.
Is this plan set up where people could contribute more? I mean, the district would be paying the deductible. See, I have a plan like that, it'll work. And I, I put in money into that plan every month and it's my money, so if I leave the job, the money follows me.
You have an HSA, I guess.
So, this is different?
Yes, there's HRA and HSA.
They don't keep the money. It's not their money.
And the HSAs work well if you're, you know, as an employer, you are okay with making that decision of, you know what, they have a $2,000 deductible, but I'm only gonna give them $1,000 and then they have to save that money year over year. But this year, for your employees, we feel that giving them the full, access to the full amount would probably be less disruptive to them.
There was worse saves.
What have you seen from Health America Aetna? Year one versus year two costs? Not, I mean, direct question, do they buy business in year one and then the increase in rates in year two starts to make the proposition less palatable?
Not necessarily. I mean, they're not looking to buy business, but certainly they're gonna price it every year and they're not in the business to lose money. So, could the savings evaporate in year two? Yeah, it could. But, you know, what this does, it gives you, it gives you a path really to going self-insured, which then takes you out of the underwriting cycle. And if you do that, then, you know, you don't have to worry about getting hit in year two, three, it's your claims. So, that's really something you should really strongly consider in the future.
One of the things that we talked about with both UPMC and Health America is starting a really robust wellness program as well and trying to, when you talk about, you know, bending the curves, trying to get that...
It doesn't work without it.
Right. And, I'm sorry, I forgot.
Colleen.
Colleen, talked a lot about that when we talked earlier, a couple of them, six or seven weeks ago, about how that is an integral part of all of this.
Yeah, I know the plan that I have at work, UPMC, if you go to the dentist, they'll give you money. You fill the form and you send it in and they'll put money towards your deductible. If you go to your yearly, you know, doctor visit, okay.
Yeah, there's no doubt that if you do implement this, wellness would be a big part of that and, you know, we would recommend that highly to get moving on that in a very focused manner as opposed to maybe what you're getting now and start implementing those controls in there because we've seen wellness programs, you know, really impact costs. When you get, incentivize people to do the risk assessments, to go to the doctor, to do their blood work, you know, save somebody from a heart attack, I mean, a lot of good is...
Can you predict when the rates will change? I said it's through July 1. Is it about three months quarterly where you can sustain a rise or a change?
I mean, the rates, if they wouldn't implement July 1, it would be looked at...
October.
We, our rates are usually a 30-day. Those rates are for July 1. If we talked, you know, with maybe an August or a September start date, those rates would probably be pretty close to the penny. Once you sign with us, it's a 12-month contract. So, you would renew that following July, August, September, whatever your initial start date is.
Yeah, but to your point, yeah, if they would relook at it, you know, if it goes beyond the 30 days, it's okay, we're gonna do it August 1. Their underwriters would look at it. You know, likely they would hold, but of course you would have it.
What is your history, like, go back five years, how big of an increase does you average like every year?
I mean, for a company of your size, your renewal is truly gonna be based on your claims experience or your claims utilization. I mean, you're going to be what we would call 100 percent credible. So, the dollar, the claim sellers that you have is really going to be what attributes to your renewal. Medical trend right now, if this helps for Health America, is about 11 percent. You see those medical trend increases about 11 percent every year. It's a pretty good average. If your group performs very well and as Mike had indicated, you guys seem to be a pretty well-running group, it could be much lower than that. If you have a very high utilizing year, to somebody's point, maybe everybody in the company maxes out that deductible, it may be, it could be above a trend increase.
So, you're individualized per school district, what you're telling me?
It's all about...
Oh, absolutely. It is. Your renewal would be based on your utilization here at this group.
And you would receive that information on a quarterly basis. Once you were with Health America for one year, you would receive that information on a quarterly basis after that year is over. So, you would not be, after that first year, it would not be a surprise. Every quarter, you get utilization information, tells you how your claims are running, how that compares to what you're paying, your heavy hitters, your high claimants, your high diagnosis.
But in our experience, we have not seen them jack people in a second year. That has not been our experience.
In fact, in my own personal experience, I have a lot of repeat renewals with Health America. I, in fact, I don't believe any of my clients, if they've made that move, have moved back anywhere else.
What's, what's your wellness, I mean, I'm familiar with high mark healthy lifestyles and what UPMC has and what's this, this group's wellness program?
Well, we, I mean, we really tailor to the individual employer group. So, if we say, you know what, this year we wanna invest $20,000 into wellness, I've got wellness folks in my office that will come out and develop a custom plan for what you guys need. Typically, what we'll do for new customers to Health America is we'll start with a health risk assessment questionnaire that anybody in the organization would have access to fill out. And once they fill that, that information out, a cumulative report will come back to whomever, you know, we deem a contact to be. And we might say, we might find it's, it would never be member-specific, it would be, you know, global, but we might find, well, 50 percent of our workforce are tobacco users. Maybe we need to implement a tobacco cessation program. Weight watchers programs, you know, just based on the results of those reports, we'll then implement and develop a program that would meet your needs.
And how much success have you had in the past with getting employees to fill out that survey if there's not a carrot or stick?
Right, if there's not some kind of dangle out there.
Yeah, you gotta capitalize.
It's, it's tough. You're not gonna get 100 percent. You might get 30, 40 percent of your group that actually fills it out, you know, the first year. And again, it depends on how you guys structure it. You know, maybe you structure some of this towards payroll deductions. You can get, you can get really creative.
But yours is an online tool?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
They also, they do an online tool, but they also have, if you prefer a paper-based, if your employees, you know your employees are not going to respond to an online, the HRA is online, the health risk assessment is online, but if you wanted to do a weight loss program throughout the district, people can, you know, through the honor system, do paper fillouts and turn those in. I mean, we can work around whatever hurdle you might have.
And the data that we will receive is, we don't have data about our usage right now. I mean, Mike...
We have some, yeah, we do have some.
Got it, but it's very difficult. It wasn't like a normal part of the business of the consortium to hand out that kind of data. So, it would be nice to get that. That's another benefit. And once again, this is the start of a conversation. This is not something that is going to be implemented in the next two or three months. It's just, it's gonna take a process, but we definitely, you know, think about it, you know, over the summer. If we have any questions, we can have Mike come in and answer some more questions, you know, write down anything that you might have, or any questions that you might have and then really start this fall, making, you know, the decision about what we'd like to do and how that would, and how that would work. So, that's, that's kind of the plan of attack right now. Are there any more questions that you have about this? I know it's a lot of information in a short amount of time. However, you have to start somewhere.
Just if you have, and I'm not asking you tonight to get into this, but if you have other school districts that are participating in this exact plan, what's the three, four-year history with regards to renewal rates that you're expecting and how much of the participation have they got with wellness? Because I've found just being in healthcare, you're not gonna get a lot of movement unless you have everybody participating.
You gotta offer money. There's no doubt.
Or it's the stick, one or the other. And it'd be a little difficult with our contracts to offer the stick. And it'd be a little difficult with our contracts to offer the stick.
And then, just real briefly, on the other side of your packet is this flyer. This is a service that we offer through Gallagher for your employees. It's a hotline, that if they have any questions or problems with their benefits, they can call us.
There'll be support.
Right. So, you know, they can't get their HRA to pay it. I went to the pharmacy, I couldn't get my debit card to work. They can call us, and we can take care of it.
You guys are from Western Pennsylvania?
Pardon?
You guys are from Western Pennsylvania, San Francisco.
Thank you very much. Okay, as I mentioned, something to think about, there's some potential significant savings there for the school district, and we can continue that conversation. And, Mr. President, that is all the information that I have.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, I'm just going to take a little, little liberty on communication. It's very unusual for us to be in this situation at this time, but this meeting is going to be very, very long. And it starts right off with the recognition of visitors. We have 12 people signed up, allotted a minimum of five minutes. So, that alone, before we even get into the main body of this presentation, will take a minimum of an hour. From that point, we have extensive deliberation dealing, once we get into the main body of what has to be dealt with in the agenda. We have budgetary deliberation to do, plus we have building plan deliberation to do. So, for those of you with young family or other issues of time, we'll try to give a time for you to break up, and if you choose to leave. Again, we encourage you to be here, but this could be, could be a long night. So, at this time, we'll go into recognition of district residents. And the following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and group affiliation, if any. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements will be directed at the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I can interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. And this time, we'll begin through the list. Thank you very much. For those of you who wish to leave at this particular time, we again appreciate the diversity of comments, typically those that are so difficult to present related to the potential outsourcing, as the term is used. At this time, we're going to continue on with the main body of the meeting. And we'll start with the treasurer's report. They have a motion to approve the treasurer's report and the high school extracurricular fund report.
Motion.
Second.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. They have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of June.
Motion.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. Old business? No, old business. Executive session is the next item. We were four minutes late and primarily, the main focus was on personnel. We move into new business. Athletics and extracurricular, Mrs. Zissin.
Thank you. Move to accept the following resignations immediately. Jane DeBohn, girls tennis assistant coach. Vince Merciglio, seventh grade boys basketball coach at Trafford Middle School. Sam Danilo, varsity girls softball head coach. Greg Saracini, department chair for language arts and reading, grades nine through 12.
Second.
Rich.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the opening of the three varsity girls softball assistant coach positions at Penn Trafford High School due to the resignation of Sam, Mr. Sam Danilo as varsity girls softball head coach. This is according to district policy.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employment is contingent upon the receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Jane DeBohn, girls tennis head coach, effective immediately. Kathy Kelly-Geras, head teacher at Penn Trafford High School, effective 8/19/13. Brooke Kuchak, computer tech assistant at McKella Elementary School, effective immediately. Janice Perkins, family consumer science department chair district-wide, effective 8/19/13. David Moye, department chair for language arts and reading, grades nine through 12, effective August 19, 2013.
Second.
Second by Scott.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
That's all, Mr. President.
Motion carried. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik.
Thank you, Mr. President. Recommend that the 2013-14 school district budget and schedules in a total amount of $49,305,888, tentatively adopted at the Information Committee meeting held on May 6, 2013, properly advertised in accordance with the school laws of Pennsylvania, be adopted and filed in official board minutes to include the following taxes, as shown in the budget: real estate tax at a rate of 74.85 mils; real estate tax rate for any portion located in Trafford borough is 14.43 mils; per capita tax, section 679, school laws of Pennsylvania are at a rate of $5 on each eligible resident; and the Act 511 taxes as listed; the 2013-14 budget breakdown as listed.
Question.
Second by Bruce.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I just want to add that I support that, that we definitely, our financial plans, we have for renovations, we have to start thinking about how we're going to plan for older buildings. I've mentioned this for years now, but we have to keep on, make some kind of financial plan before we do construction plans. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Trucey, for your additional comments.
Move to grant the administration permission to advertise for bids for those items and projects requiring competitive bidding, according to the statute, and appearing in the 2014 school year budget, as well as the current construction budget.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to pay all end-of-year invoices, which are a part of the 2012-13 school district operations and were included in the current budget, and to make end-of-year budgetary transfers.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move that the following banks be named depositories for the 2013-14 school year for the accounts as listed.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the administration to make payments amounting to $5,640 for credits earned by professional employees in accordance with the negotiated agreement. The list as presented to the board showing the individual payments due will be filed with the official minutes of this meeting.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to assign $2,432,000 of fund balance for future retirement and/or building project expenses.
I got a question. Brad, is the estimated ending fund balance?
No, this is, this is just a portion that we have set aside. Last year was $2 million, this year we added $432,000. So, there's an additional $1.5 million basically on top of this that's unreserved.
3.9 is what we're going to end with?
Yes. That, right, 3.9 includes the 2.4 million. That's correct.
It's positive. We have 1.5 when you're done.
Right, 1.5 unreserved, 2.4 reserved, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Second. Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the expenditures for the month of 2013 for the high school renovation project, according to the schedule, as listed below.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize the Penn Trafford School District to enter into an energy-saving contract with Johnson Controls as a joint district for the CWCTC.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Before I go on, I'd like to, as you know, our nine board members with the Central Vote Tech have been working hard for this, and I want to thank you for your unanimous support. You've done it in the past, and you continue. You have a big interest in the students that go there, and this shows it. As you know, it has to be unanimous with all the nine districts. I found out last week that Yonk approved it, and now Penn Trafford approved it. And please, Dr. Butler, notify Mr. Elwood Demarc again that we approved it. That's two down and seven more to go, and I'll know definitely on the 26th of this month, exactly. And I think it's improved, but there's no guarantees yet. But thank you again. This board has been very, very, very cooperative.
I want to take a time before I move on in my part. Nick, I think all of the board members here want to thank you for, for the effort and the time that you put in for the students of the CWCTC. I'm proud as a board member to call you a colleague. You really, you really do care for the, for the kids, not that we all do, but you really put in the effort and the time, and I appreciate it very much. I think we all do.
Thank you very much. That is all for Mr. Mead. I'll put myself for me. Thank you, Mr. Kachasik. Catherine, move with the buildings, grounds, and safety, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. First, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the Penn Trafford School District to enter into a mutual written agreement with the lowest responsible bidder, listed below, where all specifications were met, as listed in the amounts indicated for the roof repairs at Harrison Park Elementary School. The bids were open at a public session on Monday, June 3, 2013, at 10:00 a.m. at the Administration Building. Successful bidder was Toscano Mayor Roofing Incorporated of 373 Moween Road, Salzburg, PA, and the successful bid amount was $109,200.
Second.
Second by Rich.
I have a question. I do have a question.
Go ahead.
The, the, this, this amount here is just part of our ongoing process of repairing roofs, right? We already have this budgeted.
Correct. Just as a point of clarification, we have assigned $200,000 in the budget for roof repairs for this coming year. Now, this $109,000 is strictly for the installation. We have found that we can purchase the materials on our own through that budget, through the state contract. So, we are going to purchase these supplies at about another $70,000. So, the total project cost is approximately $180,000. But we do have $200,000 allotted for Harrison Park for this project.
Thank you, Brad.
You're welcome. Thank you for the question.
Anybody else? Okay, I have, bids were advertised and received from several companies for digital...
I'm sorry, we did, we did not.
I skipped the vote.
You got a second.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
No. Bids were advertised and received from seven companies for digital copyers and print management service for the 2013-14 school year. Bids were open on May 17, 2013, at 10:00 a.m. The Administration Building has published an advertisement. Bids were reviewed and tabulated in the central office, reviewed by the business manager and personnel, personnel involved, and is recommended at the digital copyers and print management service, bid in a total amount of $7,396 a month to awarded pending budget approval to COMDOC services and supplies. And I want to comment, that's even a little less than it's cost us in the past. So, it's great, great news.
And just one more note, part of this package also includes a software program that will help us control the document flow. So, that should take volume off of the more expensive printers and put them on to the least expensive copiers. So, that also included, our price would be even less if we didn't buy that software. But I think that's a great tool that Jason will be able to manage the, the document flow much better. And just as a point of order, this is a four-year, a 48-month contract. Our last contract was 60 months. We actually found that more in the last 12 months, we started to see some significant equipment breakdown. So, we're comfortable that 48-month lease is the way to go. But that's, that price is locked in for all 48 months.
And one more quick comment, I did a little past research from my tenure here on the board, and whenever I first came on the board, we were paying almost twice as much.
That's correct.
On a monthly basis.
Yeah, we had huge savings.
Less machines.
Yep.
Less, less efficiency. So, this is a very big strike and right direction.
Great.
Second.
You have a question?
Second.
And a question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Okay, I have a motion, I would like to make a motion to employ the following to be assigned by the administration. Fringe benefits will be provided according to the negotiated agreement. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and the acceptance of Act 34-151 and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. First would be Shane Masterson as a custodian at the Penn Trafford High School at $14.60 per hour, effective on June 11, 2013. Second would be Mr. Calvin Gongware, maintenance garage supervisor, at $23.15 an hour, effective June 17, 2013. Third would be Timothy Buxton, maintenance, at $23.15 an hour, and the effective date is yet to be determined.
Second.
Second by Nick.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd like to make a motion to the grand administration, the authorization, excuse me, to enter into an agreement for a new phone system, at a cost not to exceed $200,000.
Second. Second by Tony.
We have a question.
Can I make a comment?
Yeah.
We, we, again, I think last week we talked about, we had, I believe, six, six or seven companies that submitted proposals to us. Jason and Gil were able to get it down to two finalists. We just got the final numbers in today, so I haven't had a chance, it was this afternoon as a matter of fact, I haven't had a chance to, to really go through the quotes. But where we are basically is, we're looking at a Mitel system. We received final proposals from Windstream and from ASCC.[1648.00] We just got the final numbers in today, so I haven't had a chance, it was this afternoon as a matter of fact, I haven't had a chance to really go through the quotes, but where we are basically is, we're looking at a Mitel system. We received final proposals from Windstream and from ASCC. Windstream is our current phone service provider. ASCC installed our last system and does a lot of work here in the district. It looks like the equipment part of the, the proposal is going to be somewhere in the ballpark of $150,000. We still may have to tweak some things, but we think that we're still going to be well within that $200,000 figure. That is a complete, brand-new system district-wide. There will be an annual service agreement of approximately $20,000 to go along with that, which we should be able to pay for from the savings that Jason was able to come up with through switching the way that the outside line come into the building. So, you know, unfortunately, the system just got to the point, as Jason showed us last week, that we can't maintain it, it's hard to find parts, and we really are in a position where we need to do something. So I think that we've come up with a pretty good proposal. If those numbers don't work, we won't proceed, but if we can stay within the parameters, then we'll move on with the awarding of the contract.
Do you know that if we would go with the Windstream system, if that would lock us into using them as a provider?
No, we're only locked in for service under E-rate for one more year. So this time next year, actually a little bit earlier than this time next year, when the E-rate window opens, we will be shopping out the service coming in from the outside.
Do you have a second? I think Tony. We have a question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And the motion carry.
Okay, I have a motion now, I would like to make the move to approve the high school building project for no more than $32 million and finance for 12 years.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, we made the motion.
I'm sorry, my apologies. Second.
Okay, second.
We have a second.
Second by Phil.
So we're into the questions.
Yes, I would like to move into a little bit of discussion on that matter. I'll give my discussion points first. That, that motion included authorization for potentially up to $32 million expenditure to be financed for 12 years. The, the discussion and the motion, I'm in a position where I feel that we can fund that without any tax increases and I believe that we'll stay within those boundaries and that's, that's, that's part of the crux of what my motion is, that we can do this work with that money, without increasing taxes. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ask each one of the board members, since this is such a large subject, if we could just go around, starting with Mr. Stovar, and offer your input and your comments regarding what your opinion to our surroundings.
I'm comfortable, we came back and everybody talked about living within our means, I think we're up around $42 million when we started and that was a gym, additions to the auditorium, things like that, parking lots, tennis courts, and I think Dr. Butler reined us back in and said shop within your budget. And I think we've done that and we've focused on the educational portion of the building. Unfortunately, there's, if the number correctly, it's 15 to 17 million dollars is just going into the bones of the building. So we won't aesthetically see those changes, but they need to be done, that's eaten up almost half the budget. So with what's left, there's a lot of great things being done in the classrooms to get those up to, up to par. There's some great work moving fine arts to one end of the building and doing some real good demographics, if you want to call it what the different departments. So from where we started to where we are, without raising taxes, I'm comfortable with the decision.
Another, another issue that's been very important that we looked at addressing is safety. The entrances, the entrance to the building will be redone so that all traffic, I believe will be diverted through the, through the office before entering the building. Exterior lighting and some traffic flow decisions have been made to, you know, try to evacuate the area as easily as possible, quickly as possible. And then just, you know, there's been a lot of ideas kicked around, a lot of, a lot of things on the table, a lot of things taken off the table. But I, I think that everybody's done a good job with the suggestions and, again, as Dallas and Marty had said, we were all pretty committed to keeping this with no tax increase and keeping it within the allotment debt service that we have right now.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we've gone through what I believe is a very early Phase 1 assessment of our buildings. And obviously, the, the need to start somewhere, logical spot was obviously at the high school. It's sort of upsetting that only $32 million gets you what we got. It's unfortunate that construction costs as much as it does because I think there was other things, obviously, that we would like to have done when we started this process, that we were under some assumptions that we might be able to include in it. But I think, you know, I've been committed from the beginning that we work and raise taxes in order to, to complete this project. And I really think we're at the early stages because Phase 2, which is the other buildings, that we have to create a strategic plan. Obviously, with Dr. Butler moving, we need to keep forward as a board, knowing that we can't allocate resources and funding in the future without having a strategic plan that's a little more in-depth. The high school was an obvious, easy start. It's the next journey that we have to make that I believe we have to do a lot of due diligence. But I was committed not to raising taxes and I think what we've discussed and what's been proposed up there makes the most sense moving forward from a district perspective, but would have been nice to have an additional gym, it's just unfortunately we can't pay for it.
I'll echo some of those thoughts, so. I do think the process was a good process from the standpoint of, you know, I think we, we had a shopping list that included a lot of ones. But the reality, the financial reality is those weren't going to all happen, including the gym, the auditorium upgrades. I think most of the classroom stuff was dealt with. So, you know, and truly a compromise, the $32 million is, is, I think, fair to the taxpayers, it'll be good for the students. And I would echo for the Stage 2, if that's what we want to call it, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. I said a month or two ago, and I'll say it again, you know, that kind of the present value of this debt service is only going to be worth less than $30 million in 12 years, which, as we've seen, may only buy you about half of the HVAC and plumbing systems. So, you know, we're, our buying power is going to be limited in the future, so we're going to have to be very strategic in how we look at everything from what buildings and what goes into buildings and millage and everything into a big picture. Obviously, I hope we engage the community as much and more than we did this time. I appreciated a lot of feedback that did come in, I know Mr. Pachasek really asked for that, and I think, you know, we got more feedback in the last couple of months than we had in the couple of years previous. So I'm appreciative of all the people in the public that made that effort, certainly helped me, you know, see what the desires were of the public, so, and I think that's where we're keeping the, the project within, so. We will move forward, we're going to have a great upgrade at high school in a couple of years and hopefully we move on, spay it off and start thinking about the next big project.
Well, I do want to thank the constituents who took the time to write to the board and express their views and opinions. As I said, this is a very important project for this community and for the school district moving forward. And based on that information that we received back, obviously, I'm very pleased that we're living within what we have to spend. Separating wants and needs in everyday life is a very difficult thing and sometimes it's hard to make those tough choices, but we made the tough choices and we're going to move forward with what we have to spend. And I thank the board members for coming to that conclusion.
As you know, I, two things I wanted additional, what we're doing right now is the gym, auxiliary gym, because match of our competition, quad A disc, quad A level, all the schools have now auxiliary gym for the students, great benefit. I also wanted a sprinkler system, the papers carried it well, they mentioned, but there was no support from the public. I also like to mention, if we had PlanCon, I think that would have really, that would have helped too. The neighboring district, even though PlanCon would not have paid for auxiliary gyms, none of that was available. We hit bad luck and like Dr. Trey mentioned last meeting, in a moratorium for three more years without PlanCon and there's no reach, we can't hold up this billing. But what's sad about it, all you're really going to see is the STEM part, I think, is excellent, I think that's a great thing for us, but also the, what you're going to see is new auditoriums for the public's concern, the rest is, is infrastructure. But I support it because without PlanCon, we've done a great job.
All right, kind of adjusting what Sally said. You know, I think, I know personally and I know other people on the board have talked to their representatives about PlanCon, but I also, actually, last week, I didn't get to talk to Mr. Dunbar directly, but I did talk with the woman who runs his office, and I mentioned about prevailing wage. You know, we have, without the PlanCon money, we still have the hand, to stay tying our hands in so many ways that we have to pay prevailing wage. Without prevailing wage, what we think, we save about 30%, 25 to 30%. So I still urge everybody, even though we're, we started down this path, I still urge people to go talk to their legislators, we do need help, some relief in these areas. Huh?
We need to go beyond our, Mr. Dun, if I can say something, I know Mr. Dunbar has proposed deals addressing my concerns, but he can't do it alone, that's what I'm saying.
We talked to Senator Ward too.
Let's get 500 school districts working.
Yeah, so I am disappointed, I, I'd like to see some work done in the pool area, as we know, being a quad A school, our pool is not comparable to other quad A schools. Those of you who have kids who swim or taken the aquatics class, as you know that. But on the other hand, I am excited about the STEM program and changes in the auditorium and in the music department, so that's a good thing. Having just been in an election and doing a lot of door-to-door walking, I got an opportunity to talk to a lot of people, get a lot of feedback about what they wanted in this construction project. And I think that what we're doing fulfills what most people in the community want. They don't want to see their taxes increased, they want to see a building project that is done within our budgetary constraints, and I think we've done that.
And I'm last.
So my colleagues have eloquently presented their thoughts and views about this whole process.
I, I'd like to really thank, I'm not going to add much to that because I concur. We worked hard to get to where we are and we had excellent preparation. When we had individual questions or concerns, they were responded to by a combination of our administrative team, our construction services personnel, our architect, and from community members who had very interesting ideas and approach to this thing. And we were able to draw all this information together, plus very, very involved workshops to come up to where we are today and we've come to a concurrence of where we're going to be. And as we move beyond this, we're now looking to what we're going to be doing down the line and a plan, and we're looking at creative ideas like a referendum and working toward that, which would be a major effort if we need to continue on and build and look at other construction-related problems within our district. That's for the future, coming soon, and I'm going to be modeled, but I'm very proud of the efforts of all of us coming together because we bang heads, we do bang heads. And we come up with, we think, is a reasonable compromise that is good for our kids and also for our taxpayers. That's all I have, I have to add.
In final comment, as I said at a prior meeting, that I, myself at home, I had to decide, I'd love to be driving around a four-wheel drive BMW and have some of the nicer things like that, I just can't afford it. So I drive around the super and I appreciate it and enjoy it, I'd trade it in for 10 years.
What we're doing, what we're looking at here is we have to try to get 10 gallons of water in a five-gallon bucket, that's basically what we're down to now because of just all the things that are coming into play for us right now.
I think we need to get 10 gallons of water out of a five-gallon bucket, that may be a better way. So I want to assure everybody to take time to come here and everybody's taking time to listen to us before we have to dive into this dialogue. We're seriously considering all this, every one of us wanted something, a little more, a little bit different, a little better. We're not going to try to compete with another school district, we're going to try to do what's best for our district, and this is one of the best operating districts in the state. So things are being done well here and we're going to try to keep that trend up, try to put the money where it's best spent, and we have to spend some on a building, but these are all tough decisions you're up against right now. Having said that, I think we've got a second.
There's a second, yes.
A question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And the motion carry.
Okay, and here is one more motion. I would like to move to accept retirement of William Wolfher effective August 1st, 2013, under the terms and conditions agreed upon by the parties that are involved.
Second.
Second by Scott, I think.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard, Employee Relations, Negotiations, Transportation, Mr. Stovar.
Yeah, my only report is we're actively negotiating with the SEIU and we have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday.
This Thursday.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stovar. Food service, Mr. Newick.
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Newick. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrucci.
I had to go over to see my good buddy here in my rights, if you're going to have a lot of. Move the judicial substitute teacher support personnel for a month in June, 2013.
Second by Rich.
Question, question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve tenant assignments for professional personnel presented by the superintendent for 2013-14 school year assignments will be most, for the most part, will be recommended by the principals. Final assignments will be reviewed and approved by the board for deadline date of August 19th, 2013.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve the following school physician and dentist for the Penn Trafford School District 2013-14 school year. Dr. Ken Wong, the salary is $17,900. Dr. Verhakka, backseat, $3 per student, and Dr. Thomas Case, the dentist, $250 per student.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to ship and file the official range for instructional personnel for 2012-13 school year as determined by the principals and the superintendent.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to extend the summer contracts to the following personnel for 2013-14 school year as recommended by the superintendent. Salary will be determined in the course of negotiated agreement or on counseling as listed.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve the following extra career assignments for the district's high school summer instrumental music program for 2013-14 school year. New employees contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation extends Act 34-151-114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days as listed.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to authorize administration to post advertise interview candidates bringing vacancies that occurs prior to the August meeting.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve the following requests as listed.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
One extension.
One extension.
Do we need to go name by name?
No, I don't, I think we're okay.
Move to, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Move to accept the following resignations, one resignation, sorry, two, one is retirement, retirement resignation, I'm sorry. Jenny Craig, library, Trafford Elementary effective May 31st, 2013, and Jim Reach, custodian at Penn Chapel High School effective June 15th, 2013.
Second.
Second, who was that?
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve the following personnel, Julie DiMosselli as school psychologist, district-wide effective August 5th, 2013, an annual salary of $50,000. The annual contract is for 210 days, she will be entitled to all benefits outlined by the administrative compensation plan. Employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary certification, documentation, and extends Act 34-151-114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And Sarah Stewart, temporary professional employee at Level B, B2, at a salary of $43,100 effective August 19th, 2013, to teach in the area of respected certification as art district-wide and assigned by the administration. Employment is contingent upon receipt of all signed contract null later June 14th, 2013, and subsequent receipt of all necessary certification, documentation, as set in Act 34-151-114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. And the student learning assistance as listed. And the special education classroom aides for 2013-14 school year, Penn Middle School, Patty Burks and Dorothy Solomon.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry. And we have some of the people that we just employed, Dr. Harris.
We have Jared, if you can please stand up, she's our new school psychologist. And we're also very fortunate to have Sarah Stewart, our new art teacher, district-wide.
Thank you for coming and congratulations.
Move to approve the following student teacher intern assignments as listed.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve three-year lease proposals for 90 iPads and three student iPad cards for McCullough Elementary School. This proposal with the amount of $44,535.27 we purchased through McCullough Building Project.
Second.
Second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Move to approve proposed math 180 programs at middle schools. This is an individualized math program for struggling students that delivers instruction at the student's current level of functioning.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for, this will be, the cost of that is $67,000, which will be paid through the two middle schools' building budget. They agreed to.
That's right.
That's through Mr. Simpson and Mr. Sullivan. We have, we have, we have.
Greed winning.
This is math. So that's one of the. That's all right, question was addressed, question being called for, this will be a roll call vote, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carry.
Again, on the next motion, the one that's been publicized for approximately a few weeks now, and I've been with the board long enough that three previous superintendents I worked for, Mr. Bruno retired after 14 years, Dr. Marassa retired after 15 years, and Dr. Coloney, she was here 35 years, the last eight years superintendent. We went on a big search. We went on a big search a couple of years ago and pulled what I thought was ace out of the, out of our hats, that young man, very bright, but with an agriculture background. And he came down here and then he called me, I guess about two or three weeks ago, was down, and he says, Nick, I'm leaving. He says, my daughter is in sixth grade at Trafford Schools, and they came from an agriculture environment to suburban environment, and he's going back to an agriculture environment, and he says, I only have six more years with her before she moves on, and I won't, you know, of course, college, et cetera, and we all know what that's like, and they go on their own way. And he told me, it was a great reluctance, but, you know, you look in your daughter's eyes, I know how many times I've known it, right now, my granddaughter's eyes, how many times I've known, and very, very easy to do. But Doc, I wish you all luck in the world, you know, you're going to be missed, and two years, you had great ideas, and I wish you well and lots of success.
Thank you.
Move to accept that Dr. Thomas Butler's resignation effective August 5th, 2013, as submitted to the board.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no.
I want to protest, no.
Protest.
Fine, I'll do okay. I would like to say something. I've made my comments to Dr. Butler now privately, but I, the two years he's been here, I think it's been a phenomenal opportunity for Penn Trafford. A lot of new ideas came in the district. I've seen a lot of people that I know within education have been recharged, re-energized, excited about changes, which is not an easy thing to do. Instituteing change, there are classes and MBAs, just how to survive it, and so coming to an environment that's steeped in tradition and be able to do that, I think, is a testament. So, I wish you luck and nothing but two great years, so.
Thank you.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Before we go to this, I just, I'd like to comment also briefly that we're hoping that Dr. Butler will be available himself at a later time, his summary for next meeting would be in a more social atmosphere, we can say goodbye to him also, and wish him the best.
If you haven't paid, I'll show up.
And I have, I've been, I'm touring several of the classrooms, and I know I've said this before, but I get into these classrooms, some of the ideas that Dr. Butler has come up with, some of the individualized learning opportunities, and you go in and you get energized by these kids. They, they love it, they love it. So, he started a lot of great programs here, and I am really optimistic that we will continue down the same path that he has started us down. Thank you.
Thank you. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carried.
All right, now, it's a great pleasure. This young man's been with us, how many years now, Matt?
Six. Six. Seems longer.
He's just so seasoned.
Move to appoint Dr. Matthew Harris as interim superintendent, effective August 5th, 2013, through February 3rd, 2014.
Second.
Who gets that one? We'll give Dallas.
Question. Another question is called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Congratulations and God bless you. All right, there. Speech?
Speech?
Would you like to say something, Dr. Harris?
No, I'm really looking forward to it. I'm going to miss Dr. Butler. I think he did a great job for the last two years. We have about fifty-three different programs that we have implemented throughout the district, and I'm going to take the next couple of years and strengthen them and grow them and make them proud. Thank you.
I'm really looking forward to working with an outstanding administration team. My left-hand side, everyone from Greg on down to Kerry, they work hard, they put hours in above and beyond. They would do anything for any child. Their hearts would melt for any child. Anytime they hear a story, it was for the kids, they are there. They, they have an outstanding attitude, a caring attitude, and that attitude would take us to the next level. We also have outstanding teachers, employees, staff members, custodians, paraprofessionals, as we heard today, bus drivers, secretaries, parents, children, school board members. This is an outstanding district. This is a top twenty district. Each and every one of us contribute to that. It's from our parents, it's from our generations, from everyone who's come for us, everyone who's come on. It's, it's a true process, it's community. We are so fortunate to be in this community. We interviewed teachers today who are dying to get in this community for that opportunity, and we took that very seriously because we are giving them a chance to have a life and a career in the Penn Trafford School District, and that is something that I extremely hold proud and passionate for, and I thank God for this opportunity. So, thank you very much.
If I would have known about that soon, I could have wrote something.
I guess since Matt referenced everybody in the district, except me.
You're not sitting on the right side. You're terrible there.
I'm still tied.
Right hand, right hand.
You don't wear your bow tie.
You have the bow tie.
No tie tonight, Brett. Does that tell you?
No. Shun.
That's all we've got.
Is that it? Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Let's move to Policy, Public Relations Legislative, Title II, Mr. Noel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to accept the following minutes of superintendent's information committee meeting held on Monday, May 6th, 2013.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to continue the resolution adopted on June 14th, 1979, providing for a change in the roll call procedures for matters as outlined in Section 508 of the Public School Code of 1949 during the 2013-14 school year. Copy of the resolution was filed with the June 14th, 1979 Board Minutes.
Second.
I think Rich said second, I believe.
Yep.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carried.
Move to continue the bond coverage through Secretary of Board of School Directors, Mr. Brett Lego, and Assistant Secretary of Board of School Directors, Mrs. Janice Oliver, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars for the 2013-14 school year.
Second.
I can't believe we're thirty-two million dollar bond this year, and all we're doing is fifty thousand dollars.
We really, we really trust you.
I appreciate your support too.
I think we should almost add to that resume, Nick's comment.
I know, there should be more zeros after that. There should be a few more zeros after that, oh my goodness.
Well, I think we had a second by Dallas.
Question. And a question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. And motion carried.
Move to grant permission to the school board members, secretary, solicitor, and district administrators on a case-by-case basis to attend the annual convention of the National School Boards Association, the American Association of School Administrators, or any other educational convention during the 2013-14 school year, which will be of educational or financial advantage to the Penn Trafford School District. In addition, the superintendent may approve any conference or workshop for any staff member which has conducted in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. An itemized verified statement of expenditures will be maintained in the business office and made a part of the record following all conference or workshops attended.
Question. Number two.
Second by Nick.
Okay, question.
Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to authorize administration to submit the federal program applications such as Title I and Title II-A for the 2013-14 school year.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve participation in curriculum and non-instructional resource services department at Westmoreland Intermediate Unit Number Seven, Co-op Drug Free Schools and Communities Act of 1986 for the 2013-14 school year.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt attachment A of the IDEA-B, PL-108, 446 rider program narrative for the 2013-14 school year, as requested by the Westmoreland Intermediate Unit. I guess I already need to read that. As listed.
Second by Nick.
And a question, question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the updated anaphylaxis policy as submitted to the board.
Second.
Second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Noel. Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovall.
Here we go. The administration received quotations for all sports insurance for the 2013-14 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the administration, and it was recommended that all sports insurance for the 2013-14 be awarded to AG Administrators Incorporated with coverages as follows. All sports insurance, I could just say as listed.
Second.
Second by Phil.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
The administration received quotations for student accident insurance for the 2013-14 school year. All quotations were reviewed by the administration. It was recommended that the student accident insurance for 2013-14 be awarded to the Gleason Insurance Company, PO Box 820, Johnstown, PA 15907, with coverage as follows, as listed.
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Question. Question being called for, this will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to appoint Berkheimer Associates as the district delinquent tax collector with the delinquent 2012 per capita occupational residence and wage taxes. There will be no cost to the district for the collection of per capita occupational residence tax. The cost of the collection for the wage taxes will be ten percent of the amount collected